I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. Thursday, October 21st of the Colonial School Board of Directors. Please rise for the pleasurable allegiance.
Pleasure, ladies.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to announce that the board met in executive session on October 4th and this evening before this meeting, both for about 45 minutes. Dr. Christian?
Thank you, Mrs. Moore. This evening we have several student recognitions, some from last spring and some for the fall. And I'd like to introduce Dr. Jason Bacconi. I know he's trying to organize the kids out there. First group we're going to recognize, Coach Monero and our boys varsity baseball team and their suburban one Liberty Championship from last year. Dr. Bacconi. Just so we know, two folks who are watching and folks who may be in the auditorium watching on the video, we have three student recognitions this evening. We'll do each of those, then we'll get the kids home so they can get their homework done. We certainly appreciate them coming out this evening and their parents. We welcome you. And then anybody who's in the auditorium will take a brief break. And if they'd like to come into the board meeting for the rest of the business meeting, they certainly can. Dr. Bacconi?
Thank you, Dr. Christian. Board of School Directors, good evening. Tonight, it's my pleasure to introduce a number of Plymouth White Marsh High School students who have gone above and beyond in the areas of academics and athletics. We'll begin by recognizing our varsity baseball team, which won the suburban one Liberty Division last spring. Timing wasn't right at the end of last year to get the team here in person directly recognized. So we waited until this year to bring this group in. Coach Monero, please come forward to recognize this fantastic squad. Coach?
Well, the timing isn't right. They were at short. So. Thank you, Dr. Bacconi. And I know that I don't think we say it enough as a team, but we want to thank you for your support, the camaraderie you show our guys in the hallway and throughout the building every day. I know it means a lot to all of us. It means a lot to them. Actually, before you run away too far, Jesse has a little token of our appreciation for all your support here. A memento from our 2021 season, official merchandise. Hard, it's hard to get that. On Saturday, March 27th, 2021, we traveled to Pensbury for our first real baseball game in almost two years. Only three players on the field that day had been on the varsity team the year before. Playing against a perennial 6A PIAA powerhouse, we really didn't know what to expect. But this team showed right away that they would demand people's attention all spring. Back-to-back doubles by Luke Cauci and Joe Jakonski started the game for us. Seniors Joe Rousher and Tom Yanishek were outstanding on the mound, and we left Feralis Hills 1-0 to start the season. Some of these guys may have expected the rest, but what would come over the next several months was even more remarkable. We go on to win our next 14 games in a row and start the 2020, 2021 season with a 15-0 record, likely the best start in the history of the Plymouth White Marsh baseball program. We clinched our second straight suburban one Liberty Division Championship by beating Abington on May 14th, and we ended the regular season as the number two ranked 6A team in PIAA District One. And being one of the smallest schools in the 6A classification, to finish ahead of schools that are two and sometimes three times the size of ours is no small task. Much of our 2021 success speaks for itself and has been highly publicized, but there's just no way to summarize the 2021 season without acknowledging what these gentlemen went through in the spring of 2020. We were in Beaver Beach, Florida, getting ready to start our spring training trip on March 20th, 2020. And over the course of the next few hours, the NBA would shut down, Major League Baseball would shut down, and then it was announced that all Pennsylvania schools were closing. We started to see college programs canceling their seasons, college leagues in their entirety canceling. And by that night, most of our guys knew that the writing was on the wall. As a coach, I'll never forget that night as we made arrangements to fly back and wrap up what ended up being a 24-hour spring trip. The emotions on display from young men, 17, 18 years old, just further showed how important this game is to them and how much of their lives it really is each and every spring. When you coach long enough, you experience moments like that night, and that was definitely one that will remain part of my memory for a long time. But that night would only just be the beginning of remarkable stretch, a stretch where each of these players and those who graduated last year set a course to show maturity, grit, and determination to make sure they'd be ready the next time they took the field together. Over the next several months from that point through the spring, summer, and fall of 2020, we never stopped being a team. We held Zoom meetings, partnered with a high school team to hold a college recruiting seminar. We kept tabs on everyone's academic performance, which was outstanding during the pandemic of 2020. Our captains delivered baseball hats to Little Leaguers in our community. I've seen one of those walking around the hallway in the high school now as a ninth grader. He was just a middle schooler when we delivered that hat to him in the spring of 2020. We found ways to continue our tradition of Teacher Appreciation Day. We held a senior day over the summer at Miles Park to honor our 2020 grads. And with the help of a PW distinguished graduate, Scott Huntsaker, we got the band back together in the summer to play three games in Reading at the home of the Phillies' double A affiliate. With support of the Colonial Baseball Association and many other community groups, we were able to have some semblance of normal workouts last fall. And over the winter, we continued our presence in the community, volunteering for the ALS Association and holding free virtual baseball clinics for Little Leaguers over the holiday break. Our players and coaches did none of this because they had to. They did it because they wanted to, and they couldn't wait to get back together as a team. Every one of these moments together contributed to getting ready to take the field on March 27th, 2021, on that day at Pensbury. There's no doubt that the rest of the story would not have been written, and we would not be here tonight if it wasn't for the pride and determination that this group showed in the most challenging of times. One of my great joys of my 21-year teaching career has been the opportunity to coach baseball at Plymouth White Marsh High School. And these rare opportunities that I get to introduce our players to the community is one of my favorite parts. These young men that you're about to meet conduct themselves with class, with dignity. They've earned the respect of their teachers and their peers, and they represent some of the best of Plymouth White Marsh High School. Tonight, I'd like to introduce our 2021 Colonials baseball team, the suburban one Liberty Division Champions. I do want to start by acknowledging our class of 2021 seniors who are obviously in the next stage of their lives tonight, but I will mention their names briefly. Captain Joe Jakonski, who is currently a freshman continuing his academic and baseball career at the University of North Carolina. Joe was the suburban one Liberty Division First Team All-League Shortstop and was selected as the Times Herald 2021 All-Area Baseball Player of the Year. He put up what we only call around here as ridiculous numbers, hitting 464 with eight home runs and 29 RBIs, was voted by his teammates as our team MVP. Captain Jack Hildebrand is currently a freshman at Ursinus, where he's also playing on the Ursinus Bears Football Team. Jack was an honorable mention, Suburbity One Liberty Division First baseman, and he was selected as the recipient of our PW Baseball Heart and Hustle Award. Our third captain was Jack Svetin. Jack is currently a freshman at Arizona State University, where he's majoring in broadcast journalism, and he was the recipient of our 2021 PW Baseball Coaches Award. Joe Rousher was a pitcher for us and was the First Team All-League Suburban One Liberty Division pitcher. He is continuing his education and baseball career at Immaculata University. He was seven and one with a 1.48 ERA and was selected to play for the Phillies Carpenter Cup team. Tom Yanishek is in Tampa, Florida, where he's continuing his college. He was a suburban one Liberty Division Honorable Mention pitcher. Rest of the senior class at Westchester University is Anthony Viola and Lucas Gilbert. At Penn State University, where they're roommates and hopefully still friends, Ryan Casia and Joe Capriati. Eddie Owens is at Bucks County Community College. Ben Picker is at Rutgers University, and our manager was, our student manager was Brock Etzel, who was at the University of South Carolina. At this time, I will introduce our underclassmen who are here tonight. I'll start with our current seniors, last year's juniors. I will call them up and they'll come around and shake everybody's hand. Jesse Jakonski is first. Jesse will be joining his brother Joe on the Diamonds at the University of North Carolina next year. Joe was selected as the 2020 PW Baseball Charles W. Forster Pride of the Program recipient in 2021. He was named Suburban One Liberty Division First Team All-League Third baseman. Jesse hit 438 with four home runs and 21 RBIs. Joe Redmond, fresh off his induction into the National Honor Society last night and being crowned Homecoming King this fall, Joe was selected as an honorable mention All-League outfielder for the suburban one Liberty Division. Alex Wilkivicio, also coming off of a National Honor Society induction last evening, was selected to participate in the 2021 Phillies' Carpenter Cup Tournament last summer. Rounding out our 2021 juniors are Mike Miller, our catcher, infielder Dom DiSercio, and pitcher Ray Tomasetti. Our 2021 sophomores currently are junior class. First is Luke Cauci. Luke's a, Luke was also selected to participate in the 2021 Phillies Carpenter Cup Tournament, and he was recognized as suburban one Liberty Division Second Team All-League outfielder. Luke Gartland, Luke was the recipient of the 2021 PW Colonials Rookie of the Year Award and was selected as a suburban one Liberty Division Honorable Mention Designated hitter. Rounding out the 2021 sophomores were outfielder Tyler Gartland and pitcher Matt Crawlitts. We had one freshman who worked with our varsity team last year, and that is current sophomore catcher Chase Olcik. Perhaps most essential to the operation were our Bat Boys last year. They are both currently fifth graders at Colonial Elementary School and play in Plymouth Little League, Connor Logan and Carson Woolridge. And I also want to take the opportunity with deep gratitude to mention the outstanding work of our coaching staff, our freshman coach Tyler DiGiacomo, our JV coach Rob Luthy, our pitching coach Anthony Musumichi, and volunteer assistant coaches John Boyd and Mike Reardon. Our coaching staff puts in tons of time. One of them wakes up at four o'clock in the morning and comes here to work as a carpenter and then volunteers his time for three hours a day after school all spring. One drives from the city every day and has to fight with his boss to get out of work. One just had a baby in April, his first child, and managed to never skip a beat. One has two children that play sports and lives about 40 minutes down the Blue Route, and one just started a career with FedEx this past spring and still found his way to the baseball field every day. So our coaches, our Bat Boys, our players, and of course, I want to take opportunity to thank our PW baseball parents, some of whom are here tonight, and our families for their support of our children's interscholastic athletic careers, and also to our community for all the support that they provide throughout the year. So, sorry I talked so long, but I don't want to cheat these guys out of their recognition, and we hope to see everybody at the field this spring. Before you know it.
As the boys line up for a picture, I want to congratulate Coach Monero and his staff, and most importantly, the team, not only for the wins that they've achieved on the field, but it is certainly well-known that these young men carry themselves, they're not only strong athletes, they're strong individuals, strong people, and well-respected. And they carry themselves very well in our community and represent the PW community exceedingly well, which is just, which is more important than the wins on the field. So congratulations to our baseball team.
I'd also like to just chime in and thank them all for getting so dressed up. Seeing a young gentleman in a shirt and tie just takes it to the next level. So thank you for them for getting so dressed up and looking so professional.
Our students' accomplishments are certainly not confined to the athletic arena. Tonight we have academic excellence on display. So, Dr. Bacconi, would you please talk about our National Merit Semi-finalists and Commended Scholars?
Thank you, Dr. Christian. Yes, next, we would like to honor students who achieved commended and semifinal, semifinalist status in the National Merit Scholarship Program. We'd like to call forward Alex Halbert and Nathaniel Schindler. And we actually have one student who is currently a student athlete and participating in girls soccer. She's not here this evening, Fiona Gudarotny. Students come forward, congratulations. Fiona, Alex, and Nathaniel achieved the designation of commended students in the National Merit Scholarship Program. They're among the nation's top scorers on the PSATs and are recognized for their outstanding academic promise. According to College Board, commended students are named based on a nationally applied selection index score that may vary from year to year. Congratulations to these two that are here and Fiona who's not here, these three outstanding students. Going to have Nate Schindler, if you can come on up after the great mom photo. Can't interrupt that. I apologize, Mom. I would have been in trouble, my wife and my mother. Sorry about that. I'll ask Nate to remain at the podium so that we can recognize him for another academic achievement he received last school year. To help with that recognition, I'd like to call up Mrs. Becky Duffy, our outstanding coordinator of our International Baccalaureate Career Program. This is Duffy.
Thank you. Good evening. It is my absolute pleasure to be here tonight to recognize Nate Schindler, one of our IB seniors in the inaugural class and what I like to finally call them the OGs of the International Baccalaureate Program. For those of you who are unfamiliar, the International Baccalaureate Career Related Program is a comprehensive, two-year curriculum for juniors and seniors, which aims to prepare them to succeed in a rapidly changing world by providing them with experiences to develop skills necessary to be self-confident, collaborative, reflective, and career-ready individuals. The program is rooted in the belief of the International Baccalaureate's mission statement, which aims to develop inquiring, knowledgeable, and caring young people who helped create a better and more peaceful world through intercultural understanding and respect. Our program at PW offers students the opportunity to explore a career-related study pathway, take IB program courses, and complete a rigorous core program, a comprehensive curriculum of personal and professional skills, service learning, language development, and an extensive reflective research paper on an ethical dilemma of their chosen career paths. As you can see, this is a very rigorous and far-reaching program. The reason I'm here tonight is because the International Baccalaureate Mid-Atlantic Association awards one CP student across five states a Student Excellent Award. This award recognizes one student who embodies the ideals of the IB mission statement and the learner profile, and who displays a commitment to service in their community and their school. In May of 2021, the committee chose Nate to win this award despite it being our first year in the program and in the organization. And there is no doubt that he is extremely deserving of it. Through IB, Nate has taken leadership roles in service learning projects, working to build a lasting partnership with the Conshohocken Environmental Advisory Council to facilitate a relationship between students and community that is still going on and will continue to go on for many years. He spearheaded the first Green Week initiative at PW. This week-long celebration of Earth Day consisted of numerous activities aimed to educate students and encourage them to exhibit eco-conscious behavior. Some of these activities included a QR code scavenger hunt, encouraging recycling habits, an all-school green, go-green unity walk to build awareness, and an art sculpture on which students could write and display their environmental goals. Even though we were in the midst of a pandemic and virtual and hybrid learning, Nate and his classmates overcame obstacles to find a way to safely collaborate, communicate, and ultimately bring people together around a very worthy cause. Through Nate's involvement in the program, he continues to develop leadership, initiative, communication, and collaboration skills. He is a combination of passion, smarts, charisma, and hard work. Simply put, he's an inspiring individual, which is why I believe the committee chose him for this award. Nate, I, along with all of your classmates, the teachers, the mentors, and administrators of the IB family, want to congratulate you on this award. We cannot wait to see what else you accomplish this year and what you're going to do in the future. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Next, I would like to call forward our semifinalists. We have two of our four semifinalists here this evening. One has a girls soccer game, and other is a student athlete as well. So I'm going to be able to make it, but I want to recognize all four at this moment. Sophia Kosovich, she's not here today, I'd like to recognize her on her National Merit Semifinalist Recognition, as well as Ava Suarez. Here with me this evening, we have Zach Porter and Emily Rhodes. Congratulations. Students, students who achieve semifinalist status are among the top 50,000 high scorers on PSATs, are among the highest score entrants in the state. These students can advance to the finalist round standing later in the school year if they continue to meet high academic standards and other requirements. Wish them the best as they continue on this highly competitive process and congratulate them on this outstanding achievement. Congratulations.
I did ask Mrs. Lester to get ahold of our students before all of our academic honorees this evening. You are, you are in rare air when you talk about the scores that you receive. And I know from talking with Dr. Bacconi, that is accompanied by outstanding performance in the classroom on a consistent basis. So, we want to make sure we document that and get pictures and do some, get some social media stories out there and get some news stories up on our website. So I will ask for them, for Mrs. Lester to get your pictures and contact information. Dr. Bacconi, the students who had games tonight will get them in school tomorrow or Monday. Congratulations again. Thank you, Dr. Bacconi, and thank you for our parents and students for coming out this evening. Mrs. Moore?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion or have some, ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented in items 4B through 4G. And those minutes are all from September and October meetings. If I could have a motion, please. Eunice, thank you. Is there a second? Chris? Does anybody have any questions or comments about the minutes as presented? All in favor? Great, thank you. I'd like to have a motion on the financial reports as presented in items 5B through 5L, all of which are for September 2021. And also, while we're at it, for the September 2021 Treasurers Report, if I could have a motion to approve. Jen, thank you. Sir, a second? Beth, thank you. Any questions or comments on any of these financial reports? All in favor? Great, thank you. Now is the time for public comments on tonight's agenda. Mr. Bogley, do we have any call-ins? Hands raised?
There is no hand, hand raised at this time.
Is anyone in the audience? Okay, seeing now, Superintendent's Report. Oh, I'm sorry. Did somebody raise their hand? There is. This is on, stuff on the agenda? Okay, yeah, they'll be at the end. Superintendent's Report. I'd like to have a motion to approve the personnel report and extracurricular contracts as outlined in 8B and 8C. Board action is requested for the recommended personnel changes. Appointments for promotion, employment, or transfer are subject to the presentation of valid credential, employment verification documentation, and state mandated requirements. May I please have a motion? Thanks, Kathy. Is there a second? Chris? Does anyone have any comments on the Superintendent's Personnel Report? All in favor? Great, thank you. Student representatives?
Good evening, Dr. Christian, school board members, and community. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to provide the monthly schools' report. A virtual White Marsh Elementary PTO meeting was held on October 6th. PTO board members were introduced, and anyone attending was given an opportunity to share information. The PTO encouraged all families to attend and support school events however possible. The PTO also sponsored Scarecrow Day on Friday, October 8th. Each class built and displayed a scarecrow outside with the help of classroom donations from parents and or guardians in the community. Currently, there are some great characters and themes for the community to come see on the drive past the school. The White Marsh Elementary PTO sponsored and facilitated an amazing ice cream social on Friday, October 15th. It will run until tomorrow, Friday, October 22nd. The school community enjoyed music and ice cream outside on playground. The event was a huge success. White Marsh Elementary will hold a red ribbon virtual celebrations that will take place on October 25th through October 29th. Red Ribbon Days will focus on making positive choices and staying healthy. The school will use this as an opportunity to renew their students' commitment to working hard and make Wes a safe and welcoming place for everyone.
Over at Ridge Park Elementary School Counselor, Mrs. Mason continues to lead optional monthly food-for-thought sessions. Her focus is on empathy and trauma-sensitive classrooms. The sessions are very meaningful and provide teachers with support for themselves and their students. On Wednesday, September 13th and 14th, Ridge Park held open house for all Ridge Park families. Families were able to attend in person or via Zoom. It was a huge success. There was an outstanding turnout as parents and guardians were eager to meet their child's teacher and learn about the expectations for the school year. Caregivers were excited to be back at Ridge Park. On September 15th, the Ridge Park PTO kindly provided a lunch truck for all staff. Everyone enjoyed a delicious lunch and some sweet treats. On September 27th, all students who ride the bus practiced bus evacuation. Our bus drivers were terrific in explaining this to the students and ensuring every student exited the bus safely.
At Plymouth Elementary during the month of October, students learned what bullying means, how to be a good friend, talked about things that made them special and unique, made kindness cards with pictures of considerate words for people who spread kindness, talked about ways to make sure everyone feels included, and even had a dance party, which was a fun way to make a new friend. The Plymouth Elementary PTO sponsored a movie night on Friday, October 15th. Families gathered, gathered on the upper field at PE to watch Hotel Transylvania. Pizza and snacks were sold to families to enjoy while they watched. The Fall Parade will be held on Thursday, October 28th. Students will be invited to dress up in a Halloween costume and parade around the PE walking path. The PTO will also be providing a treat for the students to enjoy in their classrooms while they engage in a craft activity organized by the homeroom liaisons. Students who do not wish to participate in the parade will have the opportunity to participate in an alternate themed nature activity. October is also Disability Awareness Month. PE encourages families when they visit the school to visit the story path to read the latest picture book, When Charlie Met Emily. The book is a story about a young boy who learns to accept people for their differences. Big thanks to Mrs. Ramsden and Mrs. Big thanks to Mrs. Ramsden and Mrs. Kelleher for taking the lead this month.
Conshohocken Elementary observed Fire Prevention Month with a visit from the Conshohocken Fire Department on Thursday, October 7th. Students learned about fire prevention and fire safety. The students love to learn about all the different fire gear and love to see the fire trucks. Conshohocken Elementary had its first pack party of the year on Friday, October 1st. Each staff member is assigned a group of students who will be part of their pack throughout their years at Colonial, Conshohocken Elementary. Staff worked with their pack to create pieces of a quilt that will be pieced together and displayed in our hallway to show that we are all part of the pack. This is a great opportunity for students and staff to meet new friends and build positive relationships.
On Mondays, on Monday, September 27th, a school dance was held for the Colonial Elementary School students on the fields behind the school. The music was DJed by Principal Rock and Assistant Principal Talber. The children enjoyed music, time with their friends, and especially the ice cream truck that Principal Rock had procured so each student could receive a treat. The CES PTO had a very successful scholastic book fair on September 24th through October, October 5th. The students were excited to be able to purchase huge selections of books and make other purchases. The Colonial Elementary School Improvement Team is working on the school's social and academic climate with an emphasis on no place for hate. The team is also working on English Language Arts and Math Goals for the year. During the month of October, students, teachers, counselors, and administrators from Colonial Middle School participated in various curricular discussions and activities. The Colonial Technology Student Association had their kickoff meeting that was held on September 28th. Students from both PW and CMS were able to discuss the chapter's future and initiate the 2021-2022 season. On October 4th, the National Junior Honor Society application process began. Best of luck to new members of the organization. Trimester one progress reports were available to BU online beginning Friday, October 16th. Parents not registered through Power School were sent home a copy of their child's progress report. Fall sports will conclude by the end of October with the exception of football, which concludes November 12th. Winter sports information was shared during the week of October 18th.
Over at Plymouth White Marsh High School, Homecoming, which was held the week of October 4th, was a big success with a fun-filled spirit week that included wing bowl, the Powderpuff Game, Color Wars, the Homecoming game and dance to finish off the week. Thank you to everyone who worked so hard to make this a great week for all students, especially the seniors. Best buddies held their annual match party on Thursday, October 14th. Buddy pairs were revealed for the 2021 to 2022 school year, and everyone was excited to begin or continue with their friendships. Over 140 students were inducted into the Carden D Brown Chapter of the National Honor Society in the PW Auditorium on the evening of Wednesday, October 20th. A special thank you to Ms. Joanne Pinner and Ms. Lori Lynch for all of their hard work in coordinating this special event. Congratulations to all inductees and their families. PWHS Mini-Thon is currently offering their flamingo flocking fundraiser to help end pediatric cancer. If you are interested in taking part in their bright colorful fundraiser that involves flamingos on lawns, check out the colonialSD.org site for how you can participate and make a difference. PW Decca has recently been raising money for the state charity this year Make-A-Wish. The club is halfway through their fundraising goal for the state charity and plans to continue tomorrow at the football game. Many fall sports are ending and finally hosting their senior nights to celebrate the seniors and all of their hard work throughout their high school careers. Thank you to all of the coaches, parents, and fellow teammates for making these nights so special for our seniors. This is the conclusion of our October 24, 21st, 2021 student report. Thank you all for your time. Have a nice evening.
Thank you for your reports. Moving on to new business, Chris?
Sure. Motion to approve the revisions to the board policies outlined below on a first read basis. Number 307, student teachers and interns. Number 602, budget planning. 603, budget preparation. 709, building security. 716, integrated pest management. 130, homework. And 212, reporting student progress.
Is there a second to Chris's motion? Beth, thank you. Anyone have any questions about these first read policies?
I do. So I missed the curriculum committee meeting where I'm certain that this was talked about, but the policy 130 for homework, I'm just curious, it doesn't seem like it really says much. Like, why do, why do we have a policy for homework? Or what might other areas be needed to be addressed? You know what I mean? It pretty much just says, we can have homework, you know, like.
Yep. So we did discuss it is an optional policy, and then from there, we will be meeting with our administrative teams to go over consistent guidelines among grade levels among schools.
Okay, okay. So that's, that's obviously quite vague for those reasons because all the schools would be addressed differently. Understood. Thank you. Sure. That's all I got.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Great, thank you. Chris, continue.
Motion to delete the board policies outlined below. The policies were reviewed at the October 4th, 2021 committee meetings. Number 307, treatment of outside reports. Language is covered on policies 003 as well as 302. Number 701, 7.1, sales and rentals of property because the language is not policy and is better suited for administrative regulation. And number 715, use of district parking lots. Language is not policy and is better suited for administrative regulation.
Is there a second to Chris's motion? Kathy, thank you. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jen.
What is the status of our policies? I know PSBA has been updating and are they finished now? I mean, would, is PSBA done with our policy?
PSBA is done with all the drafts. It's just the process of the board adopting them.
And then, so it's just going through each one as something comes up? Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor? Great, thank you. Kathy?
I got it. This is a motion to approve instructors and classes for the Plymouth White Marsh High School Adult Evening School Fall 2021 Session as outlined in Jessica Lester's memo to Dr. Christian dated October 11th, 2021.
Is there a second to that motion? Chris, thank you. Questions or comments? All in favor? Great. Beth?
This is a motion to approve the educational contract for the 2021-2022 school year as outlined below. This is for the Vanguard School for a one-to-one aid service for one student at a pro-rated rate of $42,130. Sir, a second?
Eunice, thanks. Anybody have any questions? All in favor? Eunice?
This is a motion to approve the list of contracted bus drivers outlined in Mr. Christopher Brown's memo to Dr. Christian dated October 18th, 2021.
Is there a second? Beth, thanks. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Great. Chris?
Sure. Motion to approve a change order to Penn Builders Construction in the amount of $90,068 for the removal of and recycling of the solar panels at Colonial Middle School.
Is there a second? Thank you. Any questions or comments? Mr. Lally, could you just briefly explain for anybody who's paying attention why we're spending $90,000, $7,000?
Yeah, the, the solar panels that are currently on the middle school are part of a 20-year agreement that we locked in on in 2010 and was very profitable for the first couple of years. And unfortunately, or fortunately, whichever, deregulation came and the price of electricity is much cheaper or economically appropriate by not using solar. So we're going to remove the solar panels and they will be disposed of properly and green.
It was really cost prohibitive to move them to the new building as well.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All in favor? Okay, Eunice?
This is a motion to approve the attached proposal to install video access software at the Bus Depot on Bellbar Road at a cost of $63,750. And perhaps Mr. Lally or Mrs. Blaski can talk about the advantages to doing this.
Sure, I can address that. With the acquisition of the Bus Depot, the first thing we needed to do was, was get it connected to our network. So we, we ran fiber optic connections over there. So now the whole Bus Depot is going to be on our, our network and that allows us to do certain things. Number one, security. Number two would be this proposal. Right now, we have a very cumbersome process of retrieving and, and reviewing bus video and it's critical this, this time of the year or this, during the pandemic. So this software will enable us to put transmitters on all the, the bus, bus cameras so that when the bus returns to the depot, upon crossing over a threshold, the bus videos will be automatic, will be able to be automatically uploaded to the cloud and be viewed real time as soon as the, the bus gets back to the depot. This will help us with security issues, behavior issues, and also contact tracing during the pandemic.
And I just want to add that when it gets uploaded, it's on a secure network.
Yes, this will be on our network, yes.
Okay, we had a motion on a second? We didn't have a second? Beth, thank you. Thanks, Eunice. Any questions or comments from the board? All in favor? Great, thank you. Chris?
Motion to approve a contract extension for Dewey Engineering beginning November 2021 through March of 2022 in the amount of $30,000 per month as per the original agreement for continued full-time project management services on the new middle school project.
Is there a second to that motion? Adam, any questions or comments? All in favor? Great, thank you. Vendor agreement, Beth?
This is a motion to approve the vendor agreement with extra math for software to provide math remediation at Colonial Elementary School.
Sir, a second? Thanks. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, thank you. Solicitors' report.
I have no report.
I have no report.
Nice to have you back here with us, Mr. Sultanic. It's been a while. Committee reports, Community Relations, Kathy?
Yes, our previous meeting was on September 20th. I'm just going to go through some of the highlights of the minutes to make sure everybody is on the same page. We got an update on mental health services by Dr. Scherzinger of all the many things that we do around the district to help ensure the mental well, mental well-being of our students. We also got an update from Mrs. Burke on Project ACIT, which is regarding the assurance testing that we provide for our staff. We have got an update from Mrs. Lester regarding the Adult Evening School. We also, blah, blah, talked about the publications that the, that the district sends out and making sure that we're a little bit, you know, we're in the loop with, with the drafts and being a little bit more involved with some of that stuff. Not that they need us, but just so we're involved. Start date for the 2022-23 school year, we were, we looked at two different calendars talking about whether or not we want to start before Labor Day or after Labor Day because the last year or two, we have started prior to Labor Day because it was so late in the, or late in the month. So we didn't want to start school so late. So we haven't really made those decisions quite yet, but it's something that we will be discussing. And the COVID-19 dashboard, just making sure that we were updated, that that was, been updated. And our next meeting will be, so, November 8th. So please join us for our next Community Relations meeting.
Thank you, Kathy. Curriculum, Beth?
The curriculum committee met on October 11th. Heather King came and shared with us information about the district's avid program. And I just want to thank our four avid students that came. It was great. Tonight, we had students here with us, but it was also great to have students back at our committee meetings. So thank you to our students for coming and sharing their avid experience and ways the program has supported them through their years here. We also heard about the district's gain initiatives, curriculum review process, and then we reviewed the two policies we voted on tonight, Policy 130 and 212. You can always find a full recap of the meeting notes, in meeting notes, or you can listen to the meeting via board docs. And our next meeting is also going to be Monday, November 11th.
Thanks, Beth. Facilities, Chris?
Sure. We are getting really excited with the new middle school building in the final stages. And the support staff and the teachers have all walked through the new building and checked out all their spaces. And they are, teachers are starting to pack. We have all kinds of new boxes for them to use to pack up their classrooms. And so that's already beginning. And we're just really waiting to get into that new building. Oh, next meeting, sorry, is November 15th.
All right. Thank you very much. Eunice, finance?
So our October meeting, we spent quite a bit of time talking about the final round of financing for the Colonial Middle School project and how we might exactly execute that, including how we might use additional funds in the fund balance. That conversation will continue at the November meeting. So if you're interested, I encourage you to attend. And then we had ongoing budget updates. And again, I want to commend the, the district and Mr. Sablaski and the team for, you know, the excellent stewardship of, of our tax dollars and really trying to make the most of the discretionary funding, which we all know, you know, most of what we have for school funds are fully allocated and we have very little to play with as far as discretionary funds. And the district does a really wonderful job of trying to be as economical as possible with that. So, you know, we hope you'll join us at our November meeting because we will talk more about the financing and get more updates on this year's budgets and plans for next year.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Sutland isn't here. Mr. Riley, we have anything to report? For Human Resources?
We met on October 4th. We went over some policies and rapid antigen testing being offered to staff. Our next meeting will be on November 15th.
Great, thank you. Eunice, Central Montgomery County Technical High School?
So I have some, some really great announcements. You know, as we learned, we were all very sad to learn that Mr. Schramm, the executive director at the tech school, is retiring effective the end of this year. But the Joint Operating Committee was able to hire and has approved a contract for Dr. Angela King, who's currently the assistant director at the tech school, to take the role of executive director come January 1st. She's been a huge part of the success of our tech school to date, and we're really excited to see her continue to contribute to the success there and continue to grow our programs. Also, the tech school is having several open houses next week. So if you have the students in middle school or, you know, first, second year at PW who may be interested in the programs our tech school has to offer, those will be available next week. And there's more information on the tech school website and I believe on our district website as well, but the tech school is CMTHS.org if you're interested in those details. And then I do want to thank Mr. Lally on the facilities and everyone here for Colonial for working so cooperatively through the construction project with our tech school. And that some of those solar panels that we can no longer use are actually going to be donated to the tech school for the use of our students to learn more about that technology and how they can get into careers and incorporate those in construction trades. And so we're really happy for that partnership and thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you. Jen, intermediate in it?
There is no meeting in October, and the next meeting is November seventeenth.
Does anyone have anything for legislative? Dr. Christian, Mr. Soltanic, anybody?
I do not.
Okay. Municipal and community liaisons, anyone have a report?
Yes, this is Rosemary Northcutt, and Contra Hawk and will be holding its annual Halloween parade this coming Saturday, October twenty third. All participants in the parade can register at Marywood Park House between three o'clock and three forty-five. The parade will begin at four PM. And registrants will be able to register for different age and group categories, toddlers, children, adults, family. And there's also a category of dogs who will be dressing up for Halloween. Refreshments and prizes will follow the parade at the Marywood Park House, and there will be prizes distributed for the top three costumes in each of the categories. We invite you to come out to enjoy our Halloween parade either as a participant or an enthusiastic observer. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosemary. Do you have a report for the foundation?
Yes. The Colonial School District Education Foundation began the two thousand twenty one, twenty two school year by making grants to each school's parent-teacher organization and to each school's library to enrich the educational programs being offered to all of our district students. There are many opportunities to support the foundation's fundraising efforts throughout the year. Currently, over a hundred and forty colonial residents are contributing to the foundation by making purchases on Amazon through Amazon Smile. If you haven't chosen the Colonial School District Education Foundation as your Amazon Smile charity, you can help us reach our goal of two hundred donors by using the link on the foundation page of the district website. Thank you.
Thank you. I neglected any other community reports.
For Plymouth, Wednesday, November tenth, there is the Veterans Day Ceremony that Plymouth has every year. And it starts at two o'clock. It's a Plymouth Township Service and Devotion Monument, which is on Germantown and Walton Road. And people submit the name of a family member or friend who is a veteran, and they put their name and their branch in the program. They serve refreshments. It's it's very nice. If you want to be involved, or if you have somebody for the program, you can call the community center, which is six one oh two seven seven four three one two.
Thank you, Jen. Anyone else? Okay. This is the time for public comments?
Please state your full name, place of residence.
Hi, Aiden DiTuri, Lafayette Hill. I was just following up. I know I spoke last time about the Pennsylvania Youth Survey, and they took that today. I wasn't planning on saying anything tonight, but I got a couple of phone calls before I left for work this morning from some other moms. The one girl called her mom and said, I'm on the list. She took her cell phone. I know they're not supposed to use it during the day, but I think when, I don't know where she went, in the bathroom, called mom and said, I think I'm on the list, and I know we're, I'm not supposed to take the survey. You need to call school. She had to call three times to get through to someone finally. Another person called, same thing, calling, 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 make sure her son wasn't, that her son was on the opt-out list. And the one person was told, I remember putting your son's name on the list. I don't know why it was on there. But he had sense enough to know that his mom did not want him to take the list. It was really confusing, and these are just people I know. So I think something needs to get done. I know we spoke last time, be being more transparent and giving those questions to parents, and a lot of people had asked me since then, maybe the solicitor knows, I'm not sure. If these should be opt-in surveys, if they're given by a third party? Or should it stay as an opt-out?
We said, I'm sorry.
I did know, I didn't know, like, if parents should give consent to, for their child to take a survey?
Right.
Or say, no, I don't want them to take a survey. It seems to me like reading through some stuff like for, I don't know, you'll, you know, more than I do, PA Title twenty-two, chapter four, where it says, research studies or surveys conducted by entities other than a school entity unless it's prior written consent. So I would take that to be that I'd have to say, yes, my child can take the survey rather than me printing out an opt-out form. So just since I talked last time, a few parents have asked me because they've watched the meetings, and again, I'm not against the intent of the survey to provide, you know, prevention programs within the community. But a lot of parents, especially sixth grade, were on it, just weren't ready for some of this material. It was a little overwhelming. But there's a lot of moms confused today about why they couldn't get a hold of people at CMS. I said the phones kept ringing. I don't know if that's a building issue. They finally emailed and got a response via email. So I just think this is something we have to look, you know, into a little more, maybe. And any other surveys that are given to the students, I think, need any survey. I think parents need to be well aware, made aware of what the surveys are going to be and when they're going to be given. I think an email should have probably went out last night that said, you know, tomorrow's going to be the Pennsylvania Youth Survey. If you opted out, blah, 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 whatever, however you can handle it. But my son just said something last night, like, oh, we have a question thing tomorrow. But I don't think I'm taking it. Am I? And I was like, I think, do you mean survey? So then, and then this morning, like I said, I think there were some kids that were very worried at school today, and to be a safe place, I think, you know, I teach too, so I try to keep my students safe. I think kids being worried at school is a little bit of a concern to me. So I think that might be something to look into. I think that's it. So I just wanted to.
We did, we did send out a letter prior to, but I understand your point about an opt-in and seeing the questions. So we did inform parents it was coming. It's given throughout the state, and we've put in a request to meet with PACE's regional representatives for our area to talk about your concerns and the other concerns we heard in advance of the next time it's supposed to be given is two years from now. So we, you know, we wrote all of those down, put in the request to meet. And then I will personally, people who know me know I return phone calls, follow up with the middle school. And I know Mr. Fowler does too, so I'll follow up as to why there was a problem getting through.
Yeah, I think that might be just, and the mom, the one friend, one mom I'm friends with was this concerned, like, what if it was an emergency? I just, I'm trying to call and call.
Sure.
Not related to this.
No, I have an eighth grader, so I know what.
Yeah, so that's all. All right, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Anyone else? Mr. Bugly, are there any hands raised?
There is not.
Any board comments? Okay. Seeing none, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.